Just scatter.
Just scatter.
It's not near as much fun to scatter, I can tell you that.
Here.
Brecken.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Reddick.
Here.
Scott.
Here. Could we stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Amen? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have an interview for the Yamanashi Sister City with Randy Hansen. Is Randy here? Come on up, Randy, and tell us why you would like to serve on the committee.
Well, first and foremost, I guess, getting ready to retire here, hopefully within the next year, and just looking for some opportunities to do some volunteer type of work. We also, or I also, and my wife, hosted an international student from Japan at Morningside College in the, oh, from 2002 to 2006. And actually, I went to her wedding last fall. And I thoroughly enjoyed the experience in Japan. And just thought it was a, when I saw it in the paper, I thought, a great opportunity to get involved in some sort, you know, with doing some volunteer type of work.
Excellent. Yeah, I agree.
He exceeds the qualifications of knowing where Japan is.
You got my vote.
And we also have a-
Maybe because Jean Ambrosian told you how much fun you have on those trips that you might be interested in going.
Well, I didn't, no, I didn't talk to Jean. I did this all on my own. And we have about, oh, we have about a dozen alumni, Japanese young alumni over there also in Tokyo.
I know your wife, she encouraged you to do it to get you out of the house, I know that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I didn't get any negative feedback from her at all.
I think you're right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is that it?
Yep. Thank you.
We'll move through to the consent agenda, which is items three through 12B. You can consider these items to pass unanimously unless a vote is requested by the council. If you want to speak on the item, please come forward as I read that item, state your name and address so it can be recorded. If you want to speak on something not on the agenda, please come up at the end under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is the reading of the city council minutes of March 7th and 8th, 2016. Four is a resolution temporarily closing several streets, alleys, and sidewalks in the historic Pearl District for Awesome Bikers Night, June 13th, June 16th through 19th, 2016.
Mayor Council, I do have an amendment to that street closure request. The Douglas Street closure for the June 17th, beginning at 5:00 a.m., that will change. And it will be the Douglas Street closure just north of the 111th Street, Third Street parking lot, to Fourth Street excluding the intersection. So I do need to make that change.
North of where, Angel?
Of that parking lot by Milwaukee Wiener. So we won't be, right, we won't be blocking off Milwaukee Wiener.
So you can pull into the Hard Rock parking.
That is correct.
Right.
Coming off of Third Street.
And the part north of that will be a staging area?
That is, it will have a portable stage, yes.
Was on the map I got originally.
Douglas from Third to Fourth Street.
Fifth Street is cut off, right? Or will be shut off versus-
Fifth Street will be closed off.
And Third Street will remain open.
Yes, that's correct.
You want to be heard?
Chief Young, do you have some comments on the Fifth Street closure?
Here's the expanded, this minus that.
As a result of our discussion this morning, we'll work with it. I don't have the problems that the fire department would have for Fifth Street. So we'll work with whatever, whatever is agreed upon.
I think we need two officers on Third Street. Have you been?
Keep the traffic.
We talked about one officer for sure. I think we, I think we need two. Did anybody talk to you about that?
I heard a little bit about that. And we will do what we need to to make this work.
Talk to the department about the hours that would need to be used.
We'll hire officers anyway. Off duty usually work it anyway. But just to make sure that we have two that'll take care of Third Street.
Okay, out of that there pool, we can bring them over. Okay, and exactly where on Third?
They'll be roaming Third Street just to make sure the traffic is flowing good through that area.
Okay.
And then you'll still have the message boards also directing traffic.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you planning on using the Tyson lots for parking, too?
Excuse me?
Are you planning on using the Tyson parking lots for parking?
We haven't planned on that, but if there's overflow, I imagine they will park over there.
Well, that's maybe an issue for me, I can tell you that.
You didn't request that.
Well, we're not looking for that, but we won't stop, you know, we don't know how to stop people from parking if they're way over at the Tyson. I wouldn't think they'd be parking that far over. But it's nothing we're planning as a parking place.
Well, there's also free parking in the parking ramp, right?
Correct.
Well, that doesn't help me if the overflow goes to my game, if I play that night.
I understand that, but-
That's a problem. And then in the last year, it was the same night. And I know what's gonna happen. I can almost know ahead of time what's gonna happen.
Angel, can I ask a quick question? Do you share all of this information with the communication center as well? So that they know, and any ambulances from out town?
Yes, we do. Yes, I do. Once it, once it's permitted, then I send out a permit to all of the departments as well as the comm centers to let them know with the map and the street closures that will be included.
Okay. Because Fifth Street generally is the target for them when they're coming from the south or the west. And if they know, and that's, that's where I agree with Councilman Moore, Chief, that we really need somebody to direct traffic on Third Street so that they can get through with, because I suspect it'll be a pretty good crowd, so.
I'm actually seeing the ambulances turn down Third more often.
Are you? That's good.
We need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Brian Hall.
Address, please.
Address is 477-22, South Dakota Highway 50, Elk Point, South Dakota.
And Brian, I did take a, take a ride around a route. And I thought, I thought it looked really well, really good, except for the Milwaukee Wiener issue that you had, and you got that resolved, so.
I think you'll find the community supportive of what you're trying to do here. And as long as you coordinate it with them, Chief Young and Chief Everett will, they'll want to be there the day of the setup as well to make sure they know where all the places are, what's going on. Right? But I think you certainly have the support. I am a little concerned about Saturday night. Is June, is June 18th, is that the Saturday, or is that the 19th?
Saturday is the 18th.
18th?
That's correct.
And I would be concerned about if, if we need parking at Tyson, if there's an overflow. You're right, you probably, you don't have any way of enforcing where the overflow would park, but that could be a potential problem. I don't know how we deal with that kind of a situation if that were to occur. Haven't given that much thought, so. But it's something that we probably should try to address.
Okay.
Don't, don't you have signs that you can park, or put out in the parking lot? We could say something like-
Game event?
For Tyson event only, or something?
Parking only, I think that-
That'd be the weekend of the-
Tyson Event Center does have that type of sign.
Erica Newton with the Tyson Event Center, we can put signs out, or we can also staff the, and just work it that way as well.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I think that'd be the best way to do it, is actually have people there asking.
You'd have to, because the signs aren't gonna keep them out of there.
No, for like the home furniture parking out front, in the past, they put things that say, you know, request customer parking only, and then the other block of Fourth Street with, you know, Carlton's and Thorpe and Company, and all those, I mean, you don't want it to kill any downtown retail either, so.
Yeah.
Do we have any other events scheduled that day, Erica, for Tyson?
On the 18th of June? No, we would just have the Bandits game. Does Long Lines have anything?
I have something if we play for the championship.
That's a possible playoff game, isn't it?
Yeah, so I would suggest that we actually put people at the entrances and ask to ensure they're there for Bandits.
That's a great idea.
We'll make sure that's coordinated with the two events.
Because you're expecting, how many? Just roughly, ballpark figure, how many participants?
Typically, on Friday or Saturday, we have around that 5,000-plus people at the events. A lot of, you know, most of them motorcycles. There is few car traffic, of course.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you. Thanks.
So do you need a motion to amend? Because the motion in the consent agenda is for the entire Douglas Street from Third to Fourth.
Well, I'll move to amend Angel's request.
Brecken.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Reddick.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Aye.
Five is resolution authorizing-
Yes, no, it's consent, sorry.
Five is resolution authorizing final payment Midwest Mechanical Tri-State for the replacement of two A.O. Smith Legend Automatic Circulate Water Boilers and associated vent piping at the Tyson Event Center. Six is resolution authorizing issuance of certificate of appropriateness in the historic Pearl District for 401 Pearl Street. HPC recommends approval. Seven are resolutions adopting plans and specifications, form a contract, estimated cost for the Lewis and Clark Park Phase One project. B is a resolution adopting plans, specifications, form a contract, and estimated cost for Morningside Avenue What's the timeframe on this contract? When does it bid? And when will we finally award a contract? And what's the completion date?
One else, city engineer. It'll be bidding in April, first part of April, April 5th. And so we will award later that month and start construction in May. And the completion would be the beginning of November.
So those businesses are gonna live without a street?
The project will be constructed in phases-
I know. It doesn't matter, they're living without a street. I know, you're gonna do it by the block.
Well, they'll actually have the north half closed off first, so the south half will be, remain open. So there will be impact, but the access in front will be there. And then when they complete the north side, they'll do the south side of the road. And then the final phase will be going in and removing the sidewalk on the south section along those businesses in between Royce and Patterson. And those will be impacted for a number of days. We've got that spelled out in the contract documents. That's gotta be completed, I believe, in 30 days so that we can have that impact limited as much as possible.
And tell me why this street's that bad? I drive it quite often. I drive down-
Right.
A lot of other streets that are a lot worse shape than this one.
It's, it's tied to the utilities as well. Utilities are old in that area, about 100 years old, the water mains and the sanitary sewer. But this continues the, the construction of that corridor. We started in the early, mid 2000s with Transit Avenue over to Morningside. This carries it to the east. And then we have STP funds next year to continue from South Nicolet to Lakeport. So we'll just continue the corridor improvements through their utilities primarily, plus the roadway.
Do it as smoothly as you just said, but I suspect that won't happen.
Well, we tried to set it up and lay it out as best we could so that would be the end result. And we'll manage that as best we can. But, so we do have completion miles, or milestone dates for each of the phases that they've got to be completed so that that impact is minimized as much as we can control at this point.
You've had a pre-construction with, on this?
Yes, pre-construction. We'll also have the contractor meet with the business owners. That'll be directly impacted so that they're aware of any of their specific concerns also.
And the contractors, nobody had a, well, of course, it doesn't matter. They don't adhere, necessarily adhere to our completion dates anyway, the people get this one, but.
Maybe we should look at changing the liquidated damages or whatever if there's, if they go beyond the days of completion.
Maybe I'd do like the state doesn't have a reward. At the end of the day, it doesn't cost the state anymore, they'll argue.
Yeah, we've, internally, we've discussed incentives to complete sooner. The challenge on that for us is to ensure that we budget that ahead of time so that when we look at the construction costs, we look at all the units plus budgeting in and incentive cost for that. And it would have to be a pretty significant amount to incentivize the contractor to go quicker over than just a normal completion date.
The problem is, for me, we collect the damages and we're not damaged like the, like the business owners are.
Correct. I mean, it is a damage to the public at the same time. But I mean, we do have some damages in terms of our inspection costs and the time spent beyond the completion date. But there is, you're right, there is a public side to the damages, which in turn is, reduces the costs that the taxpayers have to pay.
C is resolution adopting plans, specifications, form a contract, and estimated cost for the 2016 paving patch program. D is a resolution adopting plans, specifications, form a contract, and estimated cost for the 2016 Rivers Landing Parking Facility Repairs Project. A are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract to Winkler Roofing for the 2016 Re Roof Project, Grayson Mausoleum Facilities Maintenance Facility, and a portion of the east-west pedestrian skywalk and north-south pedestrian skywalk along Fourth Street. B is a resolution approving amendment number one with H.R. Green in connection with the Zenith Water Treatment Plant Basin Improvements Project. C is a resolution adopting amended restated money purchase retirement plan in the form of the ICMA Retirement Corporation Governmental Money Purchase Plan and Trust. D is a resolution approving amendment number one with H.R. Green in connection with the Outer Drive and Floyd Boulevard Trail Construction Project. E is a resolution approving the, the contract with Strong Construction for the 2015 Annual curb and gutter project. F is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Beemstrom Kim for the 2016 Bridge Repair Project. G is a resolution approving a contract with K&amp;W Electric for the Leech Avenue and Lewis Boulevard Traffic Signal Modification Project. H is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement with lines and stripes for the 2018 highway, hydrant painting project. Is this the same group that got it last year?
It's Dakota's.
Oh, wait. Yeah. It was, I think.
I think it was.
Super Bowl Hula is purchasing? Yes, it is, same group.
Okay. Some of that paint has to be pre-1978. Some of that paint has to be lead-based. And, and this contractor needs to capture that. And they did not capture it. Last year, I watched them all over town. And we're gonna get an I, a DNR complaint on that.
That's one of the things that's gonna be covered in our pre-construction, basically, our, our meeting, that they need to do that.
They just blow those things all over, which-
They were supposed to have been using a containment unit, and then they were vacuuming up the, the paint afterwards. And there were some that they did not do that on, and it will be clear this time that it must be done.
Shouldn't that be in the bid process?
Yeah, but they didn't adhere to it. And we let them.
It was, it was in, in the specifications that they-
The problem is, once it's in the, once it's gone-
They were painted fine. It's the, it's the lead base that they got on the ground.
You have to capture the lead chips. You can't just let them blow all over a neighborhood, because some kid will come up and start putting them in his mouth. And it's a big deal.
Yes.
It's a very big deal. Ask your people that do the lead abatement on these houses around it, down on third floor, so.
It, it will be covered.
I is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Beemstrom Kim for the Tyson Event Center Site Repairs Project. J is a resolution approving the contract with I and A Construction for the 2016 Annual Storm Inlet Rebuild Project. Diner actions relating to assessments. A is a resolution fixing amounts to be assessed against private property, adopting and levying the schedule of assessments for the 2015 Right-of-Way Tree Trimming Program. B is a resolution deleting the special assessment against 1112 Logan Street in connection with the January 2016 nuisance abatement program. C is a resolution fixing amounts to be assessed against private properties, adopting and levying the schedule of assessments for the March 2016 nuisance abatement program, 1112 Logan Street. Ten are purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Nice Room Electric to install the 400 LED Cobra Head streetlights and photocell fixtures on Gordon Drive and other Priority One and Two Signal Light Intersections. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Wesco Distributing for 400 Cobra Head LED light fixtures. C is a resolution awarding the purchase order to Wesco Distributor for 400 photocell fixtures. I know we're doing all this. I hope we're determining that this is gonna save us money, and we're not just spending money hoping that-
These were the ones, when we had that report, that were the highest wattage, is that right?
Uh, yeah.
Because there were three different streetlights that we discussed, and one of them was a no-brainer, like payback in one year. Was this that one?
Sorry? Ed Pickens, Sioux City Street Division. I didn't get the question.
Oh, I, we had a report on the different streetlights around town, and there were the higher wattage where the payback, if you went to LED, was within like 12 months.
This, this here with these is gonna be just that five-year payback. They're the 250-watt replacement. They were replacing the 250-watt high-pressure sodiums with LEDs. As far as the, they're not the 400 watt, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's what we were asking.
No, they're not that. We don't have as many of, as many of those.
Okay. So is this a bigger impact item than?
Well, with, we're doing 400, and with 160 of these, they're metered. So we qualify for a rebate of $100 per each one, which would be $16,000. What we tried to go for is as many as we could metered in so we could get qualified for the rebate.
So there is a rebate on these?
The ones that are metered, there's a rebate.
The RCA says city staff calculated the annual savings equal to $22,000. So it looks like about a five-year payback, maybe?
The life of these bulbs is right at, or these fixtures is right at 100,000 hours. So if everything works out the way it's supposed to, they should last 22 years, 23 years, right in there. With going to these two, we're gonna save on the maintenance end of it. If you factor in the maintenance end, it, it could be as soon as 1.7 years, the payback on these. If you, if you factor in what you would probably have to spend on the maintenance on the high-pressure sodiums.
Does this include all of the streetlights that the city owns?
No, the city, the city owns about 1,800. And then Mid-America has about 6,600.
Applications for beer and liquor license, see the list, come forward if you have any questions. Twelve receipt a minute, see the list, come forward if you have any questions. That concludes the consent agenda. No one to be heard. Passes five zero. Thirteen is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Hanger One LLC for the lease of the land to Donner Park Urban Renewal, 5931 Pershing Street. I move we defer this to March 21st, 2016.
Second.
Aye.
Ready?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Fourteen is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Mid-America Energy For The Underground Electric Easement On The Combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area. I'll move it.
Second. That is the correct address.
Passes four to one. I vote no. Fifteen is a hearing and resolution approving plan specifications form a contract and estimated cost for the interior remodel of the Longlines Recreational Center Auditorium.
I'll move it.
They're putting all brand-new seats in this?
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. We're going to replace the original arena seating with bleacher-style seating.
With what?
Bleacher-style seating, aluminum bleacher-style seating. Those arena seats have been there since 1980.
Yeah, but how often do people even sit up there?
Every night, every, about every night of the week.
Yeah, but...
That's why we don't want to put the arena-style seats back in. We're just going to do low-maintenance aluminum bleacher-style seating.
They, okay, they, they don't sit all the way up, though.
No, there won't be a back support or anything.
No, he's saying all the way up in the rows.
What's that?
Doing them all the way up to the top?
Yes.
Same seating capacity, then?
Mm-hmm.
That you currently have?
Basically.
Keep in mind, it is used for roller derby and other things.
And they're full?
Uh, attendance can be 400 to 500 at a time. I mean, we can look at limiting, we could look at doing something with change order on that.
Yeah, maybe not going all the way up.
I don't know what we would do in its place if we just leave blank concrete there. Not have anything. Go ahead, Regina.
Hi. I'm Regina Smith with RML Architects, 922 Douglas Street. And to answer that question, in July, at the end of July, there's going to be a need for about 1,500 seats for a convention that is booked in that facility.
Catholic Congress. How many people? 600?
1,500.
Okay, but one time and...
But that seating is used, when I, when I've been there, it's, I mean, it's not packed, but it's...
It's not all the way to the top. I guarantee you that.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money to, no, it doesn't matter. Is there a motion?
I'll second Rhonda's motion.
You know what? I do have one question, though. This is going to be done in two phases, right?
Correct, depending on funding.
Okay, so we have 520,000 in the, the Longlines available funds.
We have, we have about 380,000 earmarked for these improvements. We probably won't be able to do everything, but the base bid would include painting and the seating.
Okay, so it's looking like 600,000 if we, for the whole thing?
Um, yes.
Hey, so you're sure, like, 300,000, 250?
Yeah. Painting is estimated at 177, seating 130. About 300,000 between those two.
Well, no, to use for... Okay, so the second phase I was going to be putting in is the bleachers and all that, right?
No, the second phase would be for the new flooring.
Okay.
Unless we got favorable bids, we wouldn't be able to move forward to that until a future year.
Yeah, I thought the flooring was new when you guys changed...
From about 2003, 2004.
I know, but the lighting made such a big difference.
Yeah, it did make a big difference. But that, that sportboard has lived its life.
Flooring would have been 2005.
What's that?
Flooring would have been 2005.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that it gets done because you have half of it looking great, and the other half is going to look crappy.
Are we looking at replacing the flooring with the same vinyl tile stuff?
No. The new floor we're looking at doing has got a 20-to-30-year warranty.
Actually, it has a 15-year warranty.
15-year warranty, okay. Same floor is done at, like, University of Nebraska, University of Iowa, their volleyball programs have a similar floor.
You're going with a Tarden-type floor?
How would you describe it, Regina?
Uh, it's a resilient flooring that's designed specifically for this purpose, to have sports courts on it.
It doesn't come up, though, right?
No.
It's adhered to the concrete.
Like a Tarden-type.
Right. No seams. Like, what's it made out of?
It's a sheet vinyl product. It's basically a resilient synthetic material.
You know, if we can get some more of those conventions, small conventions, I mean, that'd be huge.
Well, that would be the, the thing. Once the improvements are, are made, maybe we have more opportunities to seat the whole entire arena.
Hey, knock it off.
Just saying.
Just saying. Okay, I'm good.
Passes four to one. I vote no. I'm going to keep voting no on every improvement until we get some improvements that affect the people that attend the events rather than other things at the Tyson Event Center. So sixteen is an ordinance amending Chapter 2.04 entitled Council municipal code to provide a new salary for the mayor and city council members affected January 1st, 2018. First reading passed March 17th, 2016. I move second reading.
Second.
Passes five zero. I'll move to waive the statutory rule.
Second.
Ready?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
I'll move third reading.
Second.
Passes five zero. Seventeen is an ordinance amending Chapter 8.04 entitled Firearms And Weapons of Municipal Code To Add Prohibition On Carrying Simulated Weapons.
Mayor and Council Doug Young, Police Chief. What we're adding is to add a section, what we're asking is to add a section to Chapter 8.04 of the municipal code that deals with carrying simulated or look-alike guns, either concealed or open carry. Back in 2008, the council addressed the transporting or carrying of these weapons inside vehicles. But now we're encountering more and more young adults and older juveniles carrying these weapons on their person, and the only reason they're carrying them is for intimidation purposes only.
What about, like, the, the airsoft use? I mean, airsoft guns look...
The airsoft gun would probably be covered under this, yes. The only thing that wouldn't be covered is, if it's something that's manufactured to be a toy, like a Nerf gun or something like that, that's something that would not be covered. Or something that kids have that are under age 10.
But how do you know that when you see a guy out?
We don't know it until we actually...
Right, so then that guy could be guilty of having a kid's gun.
Well, he's, first of all, he's not under age 10, but we would know the difference between...
Right, that's what I'm saying. If I had one of those guns, I could be guilty of something.
Not if it was as it was described in this ordinance.
Well, I read what you were trying to propose, and it looked to me like anything, even a toy gun, if it looked to be a real gun.
Well, a simulated, if it's a simulated gun, but we went ahead and specified exactly what would be exempt from this, in this ordinance.
I mean, there's an airsoft league in this area that goes up to Lamar's, or they...
Well, they have to transport them according to where they're accessible to them.
So the other day, I don't want to say this too loud, council, let's just say a person went to a gun dealer and had a gun in a box. That's fine.
Correct.
In a car, you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Can't be loaded, though.
Can't be loaded. His waistband. And it was a simulated gun. It was a BB gun.
Is there a motion?
I think it's a good idea because it's going to prevent a tragedy someday.
So I was...
Hope so, but I, you know...
So Chad Shin came to spoke at our, speak at our church the other day, and we had a guy there with, with that gun, with his gun right out in the open, and he asked, so would he be wrong?
He's got to have a permit to carry that, even if it's in the open in the city limits. In a metropolitan area, you've got to have a permit.
That's where I have a problem. We're worried about toy guns, but we're not worried about some guy walking around town with a gun exposed. And I know as soon as I say that, every NRA guy's going to call me tonight and say, he's got a permit.
We get these gun calls on a regular basis. We would, we would ask if he has a permit to carry. If he does not have a permit to carry, even if it's open carry, he's violation of the state law.
Actually, I have to have a permit for open carry as well?
In a metropolitan area.
Now, do you go through the county for that or through the city?
Yes.
Okay. So what if you get your concealed carry? Does that also cover open carry?
Yes. That is the permit.
Carry, carry.
Permit to carry. Yep.
Okay. So you essentially would have to get a permit to carry even an airsoft gun?
Oh, I don't know if you could get a permit to carry an airsoft gun because it doesn't fall under that, that rule. But you don't need a permit to carry an airsoft gun if you do it the way the...
Right, but a guy can have a real gun and be packing it out in public. That's, I mean, that's my problem.
But he's got to have a permit to have that.
Yeah, but you can't get a permit for the other type of guns. So he... Listen, I'm more moderate on guns than anybody in the world. I think there's a reason to have guns, but I think there's a reason not to have some types. It seems like we're, we have an extreme of, in this country, you either believe that everybody should have one or nobody should have one, and I'm not of that league. But I don't, I just don't understand this whole deal, why this is, why it's an issue. And I agree with Keith. So that guy's got a paint gun or something, looks like a gun.
Well, we run into it on a regular basis, and at least this allows us to take some enforcement action, to seize the weapon, and then he's got to go to court, and the judge will release it to him at that time. But right now, we've, just pretty much tell him to have a good day.
Doesn't it depend on what you're doing with it?
Well, it does, yes, it, well, no, it doesn't really. I mean, according to the ordinance, you cannot carry, or what we're proposing is, you cannot carry it regardless of what your intentions are, in a concealed or an open carry fashion.
Okay.
Regardless of what your intent is.
Okay. Nicole, has some of this language, has...
Do have a sense of fear of individuals that are carrying them. And we want to avoid a situation where someone is carrying a look-alike weapon, and an officer is put in a situation where they have to make a decision as to whether it's real or not real.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, if somebody carries their simulated weapon and they get shot, they do that at their own risk. I mean, if they're, I mean, if they're brandishing a weapon, they're brandishing a weapon whether it's real or not.
And it's the perceived threat by the officer. It doesn't matter whether it's real or not real.
Cool.
Meaning the weapon, whether it's a real gun or not.
Exactly. So they're carrying at their own risk.
I don't think this ordinance is going to prevent somebody from still carrying it if they want to carry it to intimidate, but it does, what it does is allows us to take some enforcement action. We don't have any enforcement action right now.
And it would make it a simple misdemeanor under the code.
Doug, how would a, a paintball facility be covered under this? Because it says that you can't carry it unless it's on your own premise. What if there were a paintball facility?
I think if it's a paintball facility, I think they're good, Doug.
That's why...
And they got to transport it, obviously, the paintball gun, the way they should convey, convey it. According to the ordinance, it's already been established.
I mean, they make airsoft guns that look like AR-15s. I mean, they're every bit a real gun, it's just they're shooting plastic bullets.
At a little more higher velocity than...
Wow, they shoot at each other.
Yeah, it hurts.
And under the code, a previous section of the code, it allows for persons to transport BB guns, for example, to locations where they can legally be used, which would be fire range.
Like a paintball facility.
They have to have it not easily accessible, but some guy that's got, went over to the sheriff's office, can have the 45 laying on his car seat, and he's okay.
And only on proper and necessary case for them.
I don't get it.
Why they'd have to be able to transport it, I mean, that's for sure.
I'll move the item.
Second.
This would just be a first reading, wouldn't it? They should be able to be licensed by the city, Sioux City, then, and carry them any way they want to carry them. I don't, I don't understand how a guy with a 45 is any different than a guy that's got a paint gun, other than he can't get a permit for it. So he's got to go to take all these steps because if that officer stops him and that paint gun's laying on the front seat and looks like a gun, he's going to get in trouble.
It'd be a violation.
But yet, there's no way for that guy to get a permit. But if I go get a permit, I can put a 45 on the seat, and I'm fine. I'm having a no-day-to-day anyway. I know it's going to pass, but... Passes three to two, and I guess I'm not in favor of waiving the statutory rules, and I'm...
I'm not either.
So eighteen is a resolution approving a consulting agreement with H.R. Green For The Bridgeport West Right-of-Way Improvements Project. I'll move it.
Second.
Passes five zero. Citizen Concerns. Are there any citizens that would like to be heard today?
It's like an engineer convention out there.
Anyone to be heard. Council Concerns.
When we were out at Active Generation Center on Thursday, I had an opportunity to talk to a group of ladies who expressed a concern about, they're involved in a, they volunteer their services to provide transportation to Medicaid individuals who have doctor's appointments or other appointments. And they're really concerned about the privatization of Medicaid. And currently, they work with the state to be reimbursed for their gasoline, basically, their expenses. And they, of course, worry a great deal about how, how that's going to work with a private company. And they were wondering, of course, the first question they asked was, do you think the city could pay us? I said, well, I don't think that's probably going to work out. But we did talk on a little bit further, and, and I suggested that, that may be something because I believe that the Active Generations has a group of volunteers who provide transportation, not only for Medicaid but for other things. And I, I suggested that, to get seniors out to the center, that may, they mentioned for, to MURD, to help them provide transportation for seniors. I think they thought it was a good idea, and I spoke to Linda Santi, the executive director, and she was going to provide some information back to us and wanted to know if the council would be supportive in writing a letter of support. I explained that those come out of the council in the mayor's name, and I'd bring it up at the next council meeting to see if that's something that we would be willing to do for them if they follow through with the grant application for, with MURD for transportation expenses for individuals who are provided transportation through the...
Are they paid mileage?
They're paid mileage. I was told at the rate of 40 cents a mile, and it probably doesn't even pay for the expense of the gasoline, but, but I think... doesn't even pay for the expense of the gasoline, but I think they have a group of eight or nine individuals there who help support seniors who have no other way to get to their appointments.
It's a great program, I can tell you that.
Yeah, it is, and I think they have a legitimate concern, and I would hope that maybe if she does follow through, I've spoken to Sandy, and in fact, the director, Linda Santie, spoke to Sandy as well, and if she gets the information, she will draft a letter, and I, again, would hope that we would sign the letter and show some support for their grant application to help them with transportation. As I understand it, they have no financial assistance for transportation expenses for any of the programs that they help with. And that's all I really have, so...
Okay.
As long as the mayor signs it.
Who prepares it?
Sandy will. Linda's going to present a draft of...
Okay, chief, I've got something for you. 1512 South Ellis, between 3:00 and 5:00 every day. By Robert Stadium. They'd like to have radar set up there. I guess this gets really busy, and they have kids out... Between 3:00 and 5:00 every day, they said.
What location?
South Ellis, 1512. South Ellis. The other thing, I want to thank Tom Riker. He's our grader operator. Evidently, he was working a job, and someone came and talked to him, and he went over and, I believe it was between Lewis and Power Street on 10th. He graded it, and then he rocked it, and you have a very happy taxpayer out there and outstanding customer service, so I just wanted to pass that on. So we have a good crew, and we want to tell them thank you. I'm done. Yep.
Fourteenth and Eighteenth Street reconstruction at Fourteenth and Jackson Glen is... How will that affect Garden Cafe? Will my friends still be able to get in and out easily?
It'll be impacted. That project will be constructed in three phases. The intersection at Fourteenth and Jackson will be the second phase, and so they have an access on Jackson, and they also have one on Fourteenth. And it's not a full impact to the access, so there will be a partial... Part of the roadway will be reconstructed in front of those access points, so there will be limited space to get in and out of there, but they will have access. And so we will have to work closely. We've informed the owner or the operator there at the Garden Cafe, so he's aware. But it'll take some coordination efforts during construction to ensure that their deliveries are able to get in and out there. I know they have concerns about that, but the patrons as well.
About when does Phase Two start that would affect the intersection? Roughly, do you remember?
I'm thinking July, August.
Be about two months?
Yeah. Possibly in that timeframe. I don't want to say two months total, but in that, those months.
Observant because contractors normally stage their material right off of that, which means that'll be, if it's going to be blocked in both those driveways.
Yeah, I agree. We will have to watch that. And we've, based on our discussion with the business owner, we're aware of that.
Park the wall on 24th Street side?
I've called Kelly Black, and he's going to have somebody go out and look at that this afternoon.
Okay. And then the park shelter at Lee Ferguson?
Also called Kelly, and he's going to have somebody look at that also.
Okay. He'll have time to do that?
What's that?
He'll have time to do that since he's designing everything?
He said he's getting it onto his list of things to review.
Okay, thank you. And then this Sunday, Mayor, March 20th, is the Faces of Sulan Multicultural Fair. Starts at noon, goes till four. It's free admission. Live music and dance, arts and crafts for children, informational booths, ethnic foods and crafts for sale. It's at Long Lines Family Rec Center, and it's sponsored by the Sioux City Human Rights Commission. I've gone in years past. I think we all have, and it's really a great time. So that's this Sunday from 12 to 4 at Long Lines Family Rec. And that's all I have. Thank you.
And you'll be doing the climbing wall, right?
Be doing the climbing wall, and I'll be doing some dancing. Lots of eating.
He doesn't like heights. I don't think that's going to happen. But I want to watch.
Didn't they bring up that repelling fundraiser, repelling down the...
You know, that's funny you'd bring that up about that fundraiser, the repelling from the top of the...
Howard Johnson, I think, yeah.
So Lisa Becker is trying to, yeah, Lisa Becker is trying to line this up for us, and she sees me on the street. She's coming toward me, and I'm coming toward her. I'm thinking she's talking about the press conference that we did Friday, and she said, "Are you willing to do that?" I'm thinking, "Press conference?" I said, "Sure, I'll do it." She was so excited, and then I said, "I'll see you Friday," and that's when she said, "Well, I'm talking about the..." What's the word again?
Repelling.
Repelling from Howard Johnson's.
I would never, I can't, I'm already high enough as it is up here. I don't want to get any higher than this level.
What's the policy if I die doing that?
How well is my wife taking care of me?
Oh, not very well. Yeah, but you could still do it. I mean, it's for the young.
That's right. I'm interested.
Are you?
That would be great. I bungee jump. I bungee jump, and I'll tell you what...
I'll put money on that.
I wouldn't bungee jump.
We have to raise a thousand dollars for that, and I would put money on it. If you did that...
You'd give a thousand dollars?
Not a thousand dollars, but I would contribute toward, if you did it...
He's not giving a thousand dollars. Let's get realistic here. You see the mayor, you put him in charge.
Marvin gave him when he went to the firm.
I would put some money on it.
I bet he don't.
Keith Raddick does.
I bet he does.
I never got back to Lisa, but yeah, I'd be willing to do that.
Lisa, can you hear that wherever you are?
I'll let her know tomorrow.
The city of Tarry said you're on your own, not on city on this one.
Was there a clause in our contract that said that?
Who's insuring that, Marty? You know?
It is actually a Big Brothers and Big Sisters fundraising event.
I'm sure it's plenty secure, so...
Well, that's good. I'm glad to hear it. What, a repelling?
I've repelled them.
How do you know?
Because I used to do it with this.
Oh, really?
12 years ago.
From that high up?
No, not from that. We do the fire, fire training tower.
You know what, it don't matter. You just get more time to think about it.
The apps in here, um, you have anything before you leave that you'd like to...
Nope, nothing.
Tell us.
Come on, there's got to be something.
I move we adjourn.
Scott?
Hi.
April?
Hi.
Gretchen?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Randy?
Hi.
You guys come up with this.